Isn't it crazy? Just crazy. We might be live, so don't. We are live, okay.
There we go. That'll fix that.
Yeah. Amanda, Amanda, I'm sorry to cut you off, but I need to talk to you about this. But my Zoom meeting for county commission is starting in 30 seconds. So we'll catch up tomorrow. All right, I will. Bye.
Just a reminder that we are streaming live now to Facebook and YouTube. And Madam Chair, you have us, Ms. Wamstad, Ingen, Mark Landa, Mr. Clevin. We have Steven Zypad and Mr. Falk. That's what we have so far.
Do we have?
And?
Do we have screens?
Screens shortly.
Okay, we'll call the November 17 special. Mission meeting for order. And the purpose of today's visit is on grandstand repairs and just discussion and questions. Along with funding efforts, that sort of thing. And so I'm going to do is turn it over to Mr. Ford.
Happy to, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the commission, members of the fair board. Looks like we still have a few people buzzing in. But we seem to have the majority from each respective board. So just a quick recap as to why we're here. Ms. Wamstad, myself and Commissioner Noff, we had the chance to meet with the fair board last week. And it was intended to be kind of just a round table on how things are going with the status of the historical grandstands. As we all probably remember back in 2017. Some, some, there were some states were disrepairing in those historical grandstands. So we asked Mr. Clevin of AE2S to do a structural engineer's assessment on the structure. To which he came back with a pretty extensive report of some extensive needed repairs. And he outlined emergency repairs and then he outlined full repairs and he outlined those as one project or a phased project. And the county authorized and funded the emergency repairs. And then just also not too long ago, Mr. Clevin went in on my request, did another inspection. And found some more disrepairs. And to my knowledge and speaking with Mr. Clevin and the fair board, those repairs were done. But going back to the board that Chair Noff convened back in 2017 that had members of the historical society, the commission. And the fair board and River City Speedway. Those meetings, the intention of those meetings was to work for the permanent repairs. And you know, there was going to be some extensive cost to those permanent repairs. We, one of our final meetings as a group was with Miss Kristy Michler Wilford. To talk about some fundraising ideas. And from there, I know that the fair board had some meetings with Ms. Wilford. And to this point, I think the idea for the combined meeting was to have an open discussion. And for the commission and the fair board to have a dialogue and for the fair board to give the commission an update on. You know, where the repairs are at and how their fundraising efforts have gone so far. And if they have any requests of the commission. Any, any questions so far? So that's, that's why we're here. Madam Chair, members of the commission is for the commissioners and the fair board members to discuss where things are at. And what are the, where have we come from, where are we at and what are the future steps? So I'll think with that, I'll maybe hand it over to Mr. Stromsod. If he wants to get the ball rolling on the fair board side and open up the discussion.
Can you hear me?
Again?
Yes.
Okay. Well, as far as fundraising, we really haven't done a whole lot with that at all. We've come up with some ideas of certain businesses and people to contact. But I hate to blame it on COVID, but that sort of brought everything to halt. But other than that, the repairs are requested. By Jay in his last. Survey of it have been done. Except for that crack, we've got the material. At Dennis Paz Derek's home and his heated garage. We have to wait for the weather to straighten out to be able to apply that. But the beam was replaced in the beer garden. And other than that, that's about it.
I'm just, I think Mr. Clevin is, is with us today. Is that right, Mr. Clevin? Thought I saw him pop on here. There he is.
Originally, my wife was with us, but I renamed it to me. So yes, I'm with you folks.
You're trying to fly under the radar, I see. My main concern. From the county is Mr. Mr. Clevin, you had outlined repairs. And there was emergency repairs and those have been done. And I know you had given a timeline on, in your professional opinion, when repairs needed to start. That is repairs beyond the emergency repairs. And I think the emergency repairs would have, would have gotten us through 2023. Unless there were visible deficiencies. You did find and address right now. But in your opinion, I think at, at what point do, do the repairs, the more permanent repairs need to start? To, to hold up the integrity of the grandstands?
Well, I mean, I, my opinion and conclusions would match the, the report first issued. And Mr. Ford, you're right, it's 20, it was five years. It's kind of what we, the time we bought to start a more, I'd say, permanent, more consistent sequence of repairs and upgrades. So we're still in that window of grace, if you will, by, by doing that first couple of years of work. We're still in that grace period. And in this, the, the two items noted this year. Were such a, such a regression of condition. That, that forces a rethink or reevaluation of that grace period. You know, they're just kind of those random occurrences of conditions. So again, we're still in that, that grace period.
Madam Chair, Mr. Clevin's grace period essentially is out to 2023.
So is that for the full year 2023 or January 2023? Or five years from when you did the report, which I think was in May of 2017?
Mr. Clevin, with those repairs, with those, with this 23 window, if you will, 2023 window, does this include the 2023 racing season? Or in your opinion, the repairs should be done before the 23 racing season?
Hmm. We, we talked about that in that report. And I'm going a little bit off of memory here. You know what, I'd have to review what I wrote. I don't want to lead us down the wrong path without reviewing it. I mean, there's quite a bit of this work can be done in the inclement weather. You know, there is some stuff here that can be winter work. I just can't remember what the writing was.
I found it, it's the, you, you recommend those repairs be done before the start of the 24 event season.
Okay, so we would be starting in late autumn, working through the winter into the spring. Thank you for having that handy.
I think, Madam Chair, in that, in that fair board meeting, there was a, there was, and I'm kind of looking more at the fair board members now. There were quite a few questions the fair board had that, that I recommended really be brought to the commission, such as. What exactly does the fair board need to do? When do they need to have it done by? And, and so that's kind of why we're here today. So I'm gonna. Turn it back over to the fair board and, or over to the commissioners if, and let them start asking some questions here and just have that dialogue. I think Mr. Clevin laid it out for us pretty well.
Okay, so with the, what needs to be done, I guess then is, is. Everything that's outlined in his study by 2024. And, and that's before the race, racing season of 2024. So that question's been answered. And then. What was it exactly done?
The, the phased project, Madam Chair, that, that we're referring to, if anyone's looking at Mr. Clevin's report, is two E phased projects scope of repair work. Yep. It depends, Commissioner Ross, if there was a phased approach.
The longer it goes out. Said you were looking at maybe a two to 5% increase each year, maybe it was more than that. Because I think he gave a figure, if this is what it would be, but recognizing that the longer we went out. Those costs would be higher just because of the.
Inflation. If Commissioner Ross, if the entire scope of work were executed in a single project, the reasonable upper bound of the total project cost would be 994,000.
So is that? Are the, the, the things that happened? Would they be deducted from that 994,000?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so minus what's done?
Do you know what that figure is? What's already been done money wise?
With, I don't have the exact number, Commissioner Ross, but it was just under 90,000, I want to say.
What was the question?
How much monetarily, how much work has been done in those emergency repairs? What, what was the initial investment? And that doesn't include Mr. Clevin's study. That was about 12,000. And then there's the 5,000 worth of work that Mr. Clevin identified back in May, that, that the fair board's working on right now.
So, um, Jerry or anyone that's on the fair board, what questions do you have of us?
First of all, can you hear me?
Yes, you can.
Tom, can you send Dennis Paz Derek the link to get on Zoom? He cannot get on Zoom with the information he has.
Send it to him, Terry.
Well, apparently he can't get on because he sent me a text, so.
I'll call him back. Maybe he didn't put the county password in there. There's also a phone number in the invite. So if the, if the video link isn't working, there's a phone number and a passcode that he could try.
While we're waiting, Tom.
My video.
Yes, David, go ahead.
Tom Ford, while we're waiting, could, could you give us those numbers on what's been spent so far again, please?
I, I have it right here, gentlemen and ladies, don't want to be. We did one bid project, 86,448,40. And then preceding to that. There was a smaller project. Let me see if I can find that number. That number I don't have. It's, it's about $90,000 in round numbers. Which matches something that Mr. Ford said earlier.
So roughly then. 90,000, 900,000. But also that would be probably inflated again because inflation, right?
Yep.
Amanda, it was hard to hear you. Did you say 900,000 somehow?
Yes, because it started out 994,000 and then there's been about $90,000 worth of. Work that has been done. So we would deduct that, so that would leave us at 900,000 then roughly. But does it reflect inflations? Because we're 18, 19, 20, we're three years out now. From when that. Figure was quoted. So, okay, Jerry, you want to?
It's about a. The reference to inflation was made over three years. It's about a 10% compounded inflation. We're, we've seen 3% has been kind of a really good rule of thumb for escalator. And over the time period, it's a 10% on, on top of those numbers. So you're back to 990,000 then. Taking the 900 estimated remaining escalating it by 10%.
Thank you. Bill, did you talk to Dennis?
I'm talking to him right now and he, he can't get on, I guess, but.
Does he want to call in, Bill?
I mean, I'm going to give him that info here, so.
So in an effort to move this along, Jerry, do you want to continue with your questions or anyone else with your questions, please? And I'm sorry, I'm pushing us along, but we have a four o'clock regular commission meeting. So I want to make sure that all our questions can be addressed today.
Sorry, I got a Zoom meeting, so.
Jerry, are you there?
I'm here.
You or Mark or Bill? I was trying to think who else I saw there, Keith, I believe. What questions do you have of the commission? Can anyone hear me?
I can hear you.
Yes, I hear you as well.
Yes, I can hear you.
Thank you, welcome, Steve. All right, commissioners, do you have questions of the fair board?
Madam Chair, this is Dave.
Yes, David.
This is really for Jay, I think. When I look at the various reports that you've done over the time, you talk about recommended repair work. Do we do it all at once? Do we do it in stages? If we were to just do the, the repairs that you think will get us to 2023, would that be 990? 990,000 dollars?
It's a good faith estimate of the work, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, but Madam Chair, this is Tom. Jay, we don't need to do $900,000 by 2023.
Again, there's a phasing approach that was proposed as an option to take that same scope of work and do it over a time period, not all in one project.
Madam Chair, this is Tom again. You know, that, I, I, the elephant in the room is, is the money, of course. 900 some thousand dollars is in my mind way too big for the commission to somehow. Wrap our arms around. We're, you know, we're looking at, we, we're going to be mandated in to build onto our correctional center. And we're going to have to build a building for the sheriff's department relatively soon. And I'm not quite certain how we're going to do any of those. And those are in the many millions of dollars. But I, you know, I, and I think Chairman Noff and, well, I think virtually all of the commissioners attended meetings here a couple of years ago. And the discussion with the fair board and the racing association was as to how they could come up with some money. And if they could, if we could come up with some ourselves. So I think, you know, unless that. Is a possibility, I'm not sure where we can go with this. I, we just can't write a check for a million dollars. Thank you.
Madam Chair, this is Mark.
Yes, Mark.
I, I don't think we would expect the county to write a check for the total amount. We are working on some projects. We have a property that we have an interest in that is, was left to us and a trust is for sale. Right now, that could net us 150 or 200,000 dollars that we would be able to, to put towards this project. We have some regular funds that we normally dedicate to maintenance that would be decreased. You know, the needed maintenance would be decreased by a project like this. So some of those, the fair board could dedicate. And we have started the discussions with Kristy Wilford on some possible fundraising. We haven't gotten to that point yet where we're actually reaching out to donors yet. We need to do a better business plan and some things. I think one of the things we would like from the commission. There's a, an impression by some in the community that the commission isn't necessarily supportive of the fairgrounds or the remodeling project. So we would like to make sure that the. We can communicate that there is, you know, that we are working together and we want, want to get this project done. It's just a matter of finding the financing. So I think part of it is just that. That impression that we want to work on the community, that this is something that we want to do and we need to do. But that we're working together on it and not trying to work against each other.
Madam Chair, this is Tom again. I, I'm not sure where that concern in, in the public is. We at our meetings here indicated that we were supportive, but that we could not fund this project alone. And, you know, and I think several ideas were brought up at that time as a possible way of raising some funds. We talked about. Surcharge on tickets at the races. Any number of, there were several different ideas that would raise small amounts of money, but you know, add the basket would eventually fill up. But unfortunately, it doesn't seem like any of that has come to fruition at this point. And that's, maybe we need to go back to that, have a meeting and say, okay, everybody, what can you, what can you put into this project? And then go from there and see if we can reach that amount. Thank you.
Thank you. Does the speed, Jerry made a commitment at all on what they would be willing to contribute? You have a contract? You have a contract with them, right?
Say that again, Diane.
What I'm saying is, has the Speedway made any kind of a commitment to you folks on what they might contribute?
They, no, they haven't. They haven't, I guess.
Has that question been asked, Bill?
I don't know if it, it has probably initially, but not recently. That is a good, that is a good point. And I guess I like Tom's idea of, you know, getting together and, and coming up with. Maybe what everybody could kick in, because I know, we know that the county commission isn't going to be able to fund this by themselves. We are a volunteer group out there trying to do what we can to keep that place open. And we don't have a lot of money at our disposal, so. Just to work together as a team to try and come up with a plan to do some fundraising. I don't know, I guess. Maybe start buying some lottery tickets too, I suppose.
There you go. Well, and normally when I ask, because you have a contract with them as well that speaks to maintenance and repairs and, and all of that. So, and they're the ones that are benefiting probably the most from all of this. Or, you know, a good portion of that. I mean, it's to their benefit that we have the grandstand, as it is to everybody. You know, and so I was just curious as to where. And what discussions you might have had with them. I think the commission sees them as having a role in this as well. Because they're, they're actually the biggest.
They are definitely aware that we would like something from them, but they have not made any commitments. And, and as Bill said, we haven't gone back to them real recently, not the last several months anyway. To try and, and get a little deeper on, on their side.
Yeah, and I get that. I mean, it, you're in an ugly position there. You know, it's a delicate one, you know, with your relationship, you know, friendship, that sort of thing. And you guys partner together and, you know, you do things to each other. And so it's, it's a difficult conversation to have or bring up.
Madam Chair, this is Dave. What amount or what needs to be done now and what needs to? By the time we have a spring racing season and the rest of the US of area, what needs to be done and what amount would that be?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Ingen. We're still in Mr. Clevin's grace period window for those emergency repairs. I'm looking at, I'm going to read what, what I found in his report, Commissioner Ingen.
I'm looking at, I'm going to read what I found in his report, Commissioner Inge. The reasonable upper bound total project cost presented in $2018 of the deferred scope repair work, so after the emergency repairs, is $672,400, which can be phased over a four-year period. But he recommends that those phased repairs are completed before the 2024 event season. Phasing incurs an additional annual cost of $10,000 and a 3% to 5% annual increased project cost. So we're still in that window, Commissioner Inge, but the longer we wait, the more expensive it's going to get. But it was looking at $672,400 in that phased approach.
And much like this season, right, there wasn't any planned work. But then the walks were identified, you know, some, two items that were best addressed, recommended to be repaired. You know, next year could be much the same. You know, could take another year off from a large capital project and maybe not have to fix anything, or maybe fix, you know, a couple other smaller conditions that degenerate. So next year could look very much the same as this year.
If I remember right, this whole construction of the main grandstand was talked about, I do believe that the county gave somewhere between $70,000 and maybe some thousand dollars to start the repairs on that main grandstand. And if there'd only been $90,000 done, there really hasn't been that much by anybody else put forward and is repaired.
Yeah, the roughly $90,000 spent to date was all funded by the county commissioner roster, you're correct. And then the fair board is in process of taking care of the additional $5,000 that Mr. Clevins identified in May.
So, I mean, we have a dog in the fight.
Yes, that came, sir, that came out of the emergency fund and the parts fund from our general budget.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mark.
The parks fund was dedicated for the programs, and that was fitting the use of that. We did pay some funds, I thought, out of that repairs, too, like $15,000 or something like that, some number.
Madam Chair, this is Tom. I think Mark is right. There was, I remember that. It was between $10,000 and $15,000, if I recall. I remember.
I remember that as well.
That's true.
So did Dennis ever join us?
I don't, he doesn't show up on here, so I don't think he's on. I called Jamie to send him the email, too, but somehow the email isn't coming through with the invite on it. Then I took a picture of the phone numbers and sent to him, and he wasn't sure what to do. He said a bunch of different.
I did resend it, Bill, with the, to the correct email address, and so within the past five minutes, again, my apologies, I work until 3:20 my other job, so I was just on, but I did resend it, the exact same link he should be able to click on to his email address. So whether there's some internet glitches on his end, I'm not sure.
Yeah, it must be, because I sent it to him twice, too, so, and it didn't, he's not getting it, but.
So what other questions does the fair board have?
Unfortunately, Dennis is the one that had some of the.
Sorry, Mark.
Not a problem. Dennis is the one that had some of the questions on the actual work, so it's unfortunate we can't get him on. He was also reaching out to someone about potentially doing a second opinion to see what their opinion was to compare to Jay's, so I don't know how that, where he's gone on that yet either.
I talked to Dennis about that, and I guess right now what his thought process was is just to work with Jay on his evaluations and move forward like that. Not really wanted to reinvent the wheel and start the process of another engineer looking at it right now, so.
I do know that he did not get the report that you sent, Tom, last week, because you must have had an old email address. So when you sent that to us, he didn't get it, and I found out this morning when he sent an email that said he didn't get it. So I tried to forward that to him this morning, and I don't know if he got that.
Okay.
But he did not get that originally.
He did get your email, Mark. He did say that.
Okay.
So does anybody have knowledge of maybe some of the questions that Dennis had that we can address?
I'll get him on the line here.
Thank you, Bill.
For the rest of the folks from the county, we kind of lean on Dennis for some of this. He worked for 30 years in facilities maintenance for the university, and a lot of that at the energy research. So he is our most knowledgeable person on anything facility and buildings related. So we kind of lean on him for a lot of this.
Thank you.
While we're waiting, Madam Chair, this is Dave again. As Tom Falk mentioned a while ago, the elephant in the room is where is this money going to come from? And we are talking about pretty big numbers, even spread out amongst several years for the county. We are going to have to find someplace to get other funding, grants, the racing people, and so on. So somebody mentioned another meeting where we focus just on how to raise money. I think we need to do that, because our budget, we're going to have a tough time, like Tom said. We're going to have to build a building. We're going to have to move out of the police station and all that, you see. So the budget's going to be tight. We'll do everything we can. We want to keep the fair going and the fairgrounds looking good. But man, we got to, we got to reach out somehow. So we need to talk more about that, I think.
Tom, do you have knowledge of grants that would be available?
We, so the short answer to that question is no. The longer answer is that during our process, when we were all meeting as a group, myself, Ms. Knopf, I know that Mr. Phelan at the city as well, we all looked into different grants, and there just weren't any that we could find that would qualify. I checked with the North Dakota Parks and Rec, they usually have a grant. And I thought that was going to be our best bet, but even this project didn't qualify. So we're just not finding grants for it.
And I reached out to about 13 different agencies, Bill, and attempting to find grant money, and there was none. I mean, it isn't that we didn't try.
Didn't get any answer from Dennis.
The Historical Society has said they are potentially going to have some money in the next couple of years, but they don't know for sure, and they don't have any amounts yet.
And were you talking about the racing association a while ago and with them saying they will not consider helping out? Is that, is that the word from them?
They have not said anything yes or no either way. We've told them that we need some input and some funding from them. They talked about a couple of ideas, and then it just kind of stopped, or that we didn't get any definite feedback, yes or no, from them yet.
Okay.
That's kind of consistent with our meetings as well, when we were meeting monthly, you know, the fair very much on board and trying to work this all out and, you know, contributing. And there was never any feedback on that side.
See if I can share this with Bill. I can't, it's a landline number, never mind.
We were thinking we found a way to get ahold of Dennis, but we didn't get her.
I'm not getting any response either, Bill. I just tried calling him.
He didn't answer a phone call or a text, so I don't know what he's doing.
Madam Chair, maybe the next step then to answer your question throughout there a minute ago was another, we look at another meeting where we visit with potential fundraising ideas, just kind of echoing what Commissioner Inge was saying. We have a, we have the plan to improve it, you know, we have to. It's just, I think we need to hear from the River City Speedway's reps as well on what they can contribute and get the three entities, county, fair board, raceway reps together and just have that discussion again. It's time to reignite those discussions.
Madam Chair, this is Tom. I agree with Mr. Ford that that would be a good start. However, I would caution that we had these meetings a couple of years ago and nothing moved forward. So I think people have to commit that they're going to either make commitments or we're just going to have to forget this. You know, we can't have any more meetings where we sit around and talk and then come back about a month later and we talk again, but nobody's done anything. So, but I think we're probably all willing to try it and see what happens.
Madam Chair, I would agree with Commissioner Folk.
Okay, so where we at, where we're at now is, Wendy, when do you, when's the fair board again meeting? You have a date?
Second Wednesday of the month.
So.
Which is December 9th.
Thank you, Cindy. So do we need to, I guess that's not that far away, and so is there any way we can, if everybody is available or a majority of the people are available, set another meeting for that date or shortly thereafter, after you folks have had an opportunity to visit? Or you want to just pull together as a whole group again? I think it's important that you have time to get together to talk about it.
I agree.
And, and then maybe all of us pulling together, but can we just leave it at, Tom will coordinate a meeting with all of us, maybe another special commission meeting, something similar to this, this work for all of you?
I think it did.
Okay, and so maybe sometime shortly after the 9th of December, we'll try to all get together again, but between now and then, do, I guess, have the communication that you need to have, and try to come up with some ideas that we can all focus on for that. We have something to work with from that point going forward, and some concrete things that we can, we can do this, we can go do that. And so we all know that where we're going with this. That work for everyone?
Yeah, it should.
Okay, so we'll leave it at that then. Tom will send out something for all of us and we'll try to coordinate it so a majority of everybody can be there for that meeting and hopefully can move forward.
Madam Chair, are you thinking after their December 9th meeting?
If they, yeah.
Okay.
I don't know if.
Makes sense.
You would call a meeting prior to that discussion, or if you would discuss that December 9th meeting? And so what are your thoughts on that, Jerry? Do you think you'll get together?
I think it should. Number nine meeting.
I'm sorry you cut out.
Because I would be prepared to have it sometime after the 9th of December meeting, so that we have time to come up with a plan, how to face all of this.
Okay, so that gives all of us time. That gives all of us time to think about this, and then, so we'll set it up sometime after the 9th of December. And does this time of day work for you, or does it matter? If it's morning or.
For me, it's fun. So I don't know.
I know we have a couple of board members that have difficulty during the work day, but I don't know if you'll find a time that works real well for everyone.
Yeah. Well, all right, so I think we'll end this, unless somebody else has any other thoughts that you want to share or comments you want to make?
And then Dennis just called, and he said he is good with, with the idea of getting together for some fundraising ideas, as per Tom. And he is thinking the same way. He doesn't want to just have meetings to have meetings, so. And then, just to tell everyone that he, whatever, he'll, you know, anybody has anything that they want to talk to him about, he's, he's available, but he wasn't available for this meeting, and he feels bad, so.
Okay, well, he'll have his opportunity the next time. So, I don't know, just as a suggestion, maybe do you want to get back to Ms. Wolfart? And find out for sure if he's on board, not on board, so that you know if that's an option, not an option, or if there's someone else that's doing fundraising. We don't have anybody here at the county that does fundraising, and so probably would leave that to you at your discretion and reaching out to your contacts.
We can reach out to her. She wasn't for sure that she would be able to help us do the actual project, but she would maybe steer us in the right direction, but we'll connect with her again.
Okay, given that, then we'll do that as is, and we'll get back to you with time and dates, everyone. And so, commissioners, do I have a motion on the floor to? Do you have a second?
A second, this is Cindy.
You all. At the same time.
Hi. Hi.
Jerry, thank you.